Okay, good afternoon. This is the Eastline Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting for the purpose of budget review at Eastline Town Hall, Upper Meeting Room. It's February 10th at 5:00. If you could rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, we're here this evening to review several budgets, the first of which will be the planning budget, and that's Section 117 in our budget books. Good evening, Gary.
Evening, Board. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer. It's a pretty straightforward budget. It's very similar to the previous years. There's just a slight increase in the salary line items primarily.
Yeah.
That's about it.
Okay. So, you and I have already reviewed it. Any other members of the Board have any questions? Pretty straightforward.
Looking ahead over the next couple of years, are you anticipating any great increases? Are you seeing anything on the horizon that we should be thinking about?
As far as developments here in town, there's no great, large-scale developments. I mean, we do have a few that are on the periphery, if you will. We're not sure if they're going to actually come to fruition or not. For instance, the Tracis property that may or may not come to fruition, we don't know. There's some other large parcels, obviously, in the north end of town slated for subdivision. There's one off of, I know, Pizzaria Construction acquired, 180 acres off of Quail Crest. So, I am anticipating several projects in the future. Those would be the two larger pieces that I would anticipate requiring more effort if they were to come forward. I know Mr. Pizzaria has a five-year plan, I think, to move forward somewhere in there with the piece over there off of Quail Crest. As far as the other one down here, I'm not sure where that ends up. I think there's some water and sewer issues tied up with that piece as well. There's other infill projects throughout our Flanders Road Corridor that I do anticipate, and they're currently going on. But, again, that's mainly infill of existing commercial development.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
I don't have any. Anne? Don? Any?
No, sir.
All right. I think that's it for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I also prepared the wetland budget as well and natural resources. I don't know if those two are something that Kevin, if you want to...
The last one we wanted to look at on the agenda was building.
Building. Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Garciide here.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Good?
Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. Anything in particular you want to point out to us?
No, actually, I think the software was one of the bigger increases that we had. We're anticipating it being starting up into this month, the beginning of next month. But otherwise, it's just basically the salaries that you see, some other line items. The miscellaneous supplies, I think we were working with just to try to coordinate them into one blanket PO so it gives us better access, but...
For more efficiency.
Yeah, exactly. I do want everybody to know that we've been working, I've actually had two part-timers right now, and I did not fill the other position. My goal in the future, depending on the workload, is to probably fill that second position and get rid of the part-timers or let them just retire out, so...
Okay. All right. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it, and it looks like we're all set. Roseanne, did you have any questions?
No, unfortunately, like all of these budgets, they're pretty lean, so...
We try. Just so you know, our revenues to date are about $470,000, so we're doing quite well on the revenues.
Is there a revenue sheet as part of this?
No. Kevin, do we have one? Yeah, I think our anticipated revenues are going to be about $800, $900, yeah.
So, does that money just go back to, like, the general fund then?
Yeah. Let me pull up the work paper.
And I did propose, I am speaking with the town attorney now for a proposed increase in the fees when we start the new software. So, another $2,000, put us at about 15. Should net us another $100,000 or so.
Where is the software reflected in this?
It's the building permit software.
The $25,000.
56-114.
It's so...
That's right.
Under services.
Services, only the building permit software, $25,000.
Oh, there it is, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the software, the nice thing with the software, there was no upfront cost, so it's, we pay as we go.
So, Jason, it's a 0% increase because last year we were anticipating going live with the new software July 1. It took a few more months than we anticipated to implement it, so that's why when Mr. Garciide said it was an increase, it's an increase of what we're currently paying. I don't believe we have the software at the moment, right?
No, no.
So, that's the increase. You read my mind.
Right, right, yes. There's no increase in next year's, right?
Right.
It just kind of stays the same.
Yep. And then, just so everyone knows, building refunds, the permit refunds there, our old accounting system we used, in order to process a refund, you had to have a budgeted expense account. Best practice is, obviously, just to net it with the revenue, so you're not inflating your revenues, so that's why that's been eliminated.
I also noticed under miscellaneous supplies that you have a request for the $3,000, which would include the new codebooks. Now, are these actual books or is everything...
It's actually going to be probably software, and we'll have a hard copy of books anyways. But also, we're now required to get our own paper.
Oh.
So, we're not sharing in the purchase of the printing paper, so now we're responsible for getting our...
On the codebooks, do you get one set of codebooks?
Yeah, one set of codebooks. They're going to, I think, in 2026, they're going to adopt a new code. It's about a $1,000 expenditure to get the codebooks.
And then, you get it also online?
We get it also online just for easier access to the field. Exactly. But it's always good to have a set of books here in case somebody needs a look at.
Yeah, no, agreed.
Don, do you have any questions? No, Anne answered one for me, and thank you. Good job, Liz. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next is Section 116, zoning, and...
So, we, I guess we can go over zoning, but the zoning master had another obligation, so...
Yes, he was unable to be here tonight, had a personal situation. But it's pretty straightforward. Not always changed from last year, only the...
Was Ann Thurlow just here?
Yes. I don't know why she left.
She had something else. Well, we weren't anticipating zoning presenting tonight, so if you just want to swap the camera real quick, we could just touch upon it real quick. So, less than a 3% increase, everything's zero, $2.75 for the department head, like every other non-affiliated, so with that being said, there was a commitment issue, so we... What's going on there?
I just had seen her there. I didn't want to go forward if she was, like, waiting and just stepped out for a second. That was all. Okay. No worries.
Yeah, I don't, it's pretty straightforward. I don't know. Roseanne, did you have any questions on it?
I had just wanted to review legal expenses, but I think that that's in a separate budget.
Correct. I think that's our, either next meeting or the meeting after, when we go over the general government, the legal line's in there.
Okay, so they...
So, it's not specifically in their budget?
I thought that in the past, it had been broken down by commissions, but of course...
It still is.
Of course, one never knows when one is going to be sued in advance. All right, thank you.
Jason, I don't have any questions. Yeah?
No.
Done? Yep, I think we're good. All right, then we'll get to Public Works, Section 317. Joe is here tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking at the updated numbers. Okay.
So, there is a little bit of difference here. Usually, I speak upon Department 317 and Department 105 as engineering. In this budget, I am merging the two. In the description that you guys have in your books, I explained, but just as an overview, we've had a lot of changes in the engineering department. Our deputy retired, our admin, public works admin retired, and with all the changing in the department, there's not, besides those two people, there's really not much left in the engineering department, so it made a lot more sense. I talked to Kevin, I talked to Dan about just merging the two. So, to be completely transparent, as we all should be, is it's all there, so it's not in my budget. Most of the budgets have a certain number. I have an extra line in here. One is the highway budget, so there's the actual expense, which every budget has, there's the highway budget, then there's the engineering budget, current year, total budget, and then we start talking about any changes, so you can see everything, and all the numbers are right there. So, with that said, I kind of wanted to just give a quick overview and then get into some specifics. So, this is a $4.379, $4.4 million budget between the two of them. The proposed net budget that we presented was $60,000, because I do have some revenue lines, just like Mr. Garciide, and the revenue is here. The proposed budget that we submitted to the first amendment was $60,903 more, which is a 1.39% increase. We understand it's a difficult year, and this budget's already been cut, $133,000, so 80% of the proposed that we put in has been cut, so now it's down to a $33,641 increase. So, this budget has a 0.77% increase, a less than 1% increase from last year. But we are projecting increase in revenues, which is in here, of $106,400, and I'll explain that later when I talk. So, the budget that we're presenting is actually a 1.66% decrease. Net budget, I know we had back in that infamous meeting with the leaf discussion and all the transfer station fees, and we were there for a long time, that there is an ability to raise revenue in this thing, so that revenue that we've been increasing, not all by leaves, but it's a lot of other factors, is showing that this is a negative, a decrease in the net budget, which is, you know, I think the best scenario we can have. There's one last item in here, the numbers I was talking about. It's kind of late in the game with everything that's going on, the fire department, and one of the other fallouts is that now this, we have to, town has to pay the fire department fuel, so there's an extra $16,000 added to this budget that we didn't pay the fire department fuel in the past year, so just to keep that in mind, that's even factored in as far as the percentages, but that would be absorbed into this budget. So, that's the general overview specifics. Because we merged the two, public works supervisor and engineering staff is still public works director, myself, the deputy public works director, the highway superintendent, and then the engineering staff. That's what that line is. The stormwater management line, I'm just trying to see lines that have some significant changes to it. Line 53-520, it says in parentheses, "from engineering," so it's part of the merge, that was not a highway department line. Between that line and there's a line in the next for services, landfill groundwater monitoring, both those two are up because a lot of the sampling parameters that were being required by our DEP permits, the parameters are getting more, you know, extensive, and all that sampling cost is going up, so that's really mandated to us. So, you know, we're not just adding money on there, we're adding it because we have to, to keep in compliance with those permits. One of the big lines in this budget is in services, contract operations, waste and recycling disposal. In this budget, we, I think in this current year, we actually melded bulky waste and waste, so that's basically everything when it comes to, that pays for trash, that pays for bulky waste. Most, like, 80% of that line is, so when the town picks, the town crews pick up the trash around town, we drive it up to the incinerator, all that, the regional trash authority sends us a bill for all the trash in the town of Eastline. All the members, and we're a member of Town of Scarra, get a phenomenal deal on trash. If you see, if you've seen the articles of what the cost of trash is around the state, it's going up very high. We have a really good deal, but Scarra is trying to increase that price to get up to the market rate when our contract ends, so every year, that tipping fee for Scarra is going up 11%, so that's why that number is going to be going up each year, and we don't control the amount of trash, per se, that comes out of this town. It's usually about between $9,500 and $10,000 tons a year, so that line is seeing a lot of pressure. The other part of this is bulky waste, so when someone goes up to a transfer station and dumps items that are larger than what you can put in the garbage can, that's bulky waste. So, those tip fees that we, we had to haul that material away to London to a facility over there, and those prices keep going up. So, when I come back to this board and we reset the transfer station rates, I'm trying to reset them to keep up with the increases, so we pass on the user fees for the people that are actually using that bulky waste services, so it doesn't impact, so we can sit in front of you and have a negative net budget that can, we can continue to do work. The next item, fleet maintenance, item 54-300. In the current year, it's 280. I'm proposing 300. If you see, and the actual expense is 305, and the year before is 320, the cost of, to maintain these vehicles is definitely, and each year, when all these other departments are trying to get new vehicles to replace old vehicles, and we don't replace those, it just, the costs go up. So, that's a pretty imperative to, I don't want to have to keep adding to it, but we have to keep up with what the actual costs are on the fleet maintenance.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah, at any time.
Yeah, so, under amounts, and maybe Kevin can explain, there's not numbers, it says div slash zero exclamation point, like, would those move from a different account or something? Is that what that means?
Can you...
Tree warden.
Under tree warden, under storm overtime, under, it's just under amount.
Well, storm overtime was incorporated into one overtime account, so there's no money there, so it's divided by zero, so that's why it's div zero. So, those were all up. Tree warden hasn't been, there hasn't been any thing in that line for, like, four years.
Okay, so they don't take it out, they just leave it in?
They leave it there. I'm not sure why.
We have to leave it there to get the 24 budget to match. So, if you look at the 24 actuals there, if we zeroed those out, the mountains had to go somewhere to tie for that department. You see what I'm saying? So, next year, when there's no expenditures, there'll be no, those lines will be eliminated.
Got it.
But since there's a 24 expense, that we have to keep that there.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
So, it's kind of like a legacy line that'll...
Correct. It'll disappear next year, but right now, it's there.
So, on the backside of this budget, the budget 317, just lines and notes, safety equipment and training, each year, we're required, there's a lot of OSHA training that we're mandated to have with our guys, and it's just the cost of training is going up, so we're just trying to make sure we keep in compliance with the proper training for our people. Store materials, line 56-150, as you can see from this weekend and from all other things, we don't just stop buying salt, we put it down, it's an emergency service. That line is going down. The reason it's going, it was 150 this year, we're proposing as 100, is it's a way to help, we, in past years, we use town aid road to put into roadwork, and this year, we're going to have to spend more of the town aid road on things like salt and other stuff, just because that's the only way you can go in with a negative budget, is by eating into something. Where this budget's eating into where you can't cover is roadwork, so things like when we made, when the $133,000 was cut, one of the things that we took out of store materials, because we will still buy salt, we will buy as much as we have to, however, if we run out of this line, we're just going to take it out of the town aid road line, which we're allowed to do, by that town aid, it's using, it's being applied to town roads. It just, we won't do as much roadwork because we have to buy salt, so that's a little bit of an explanation on store materials. Fleet fuel, I, and this goes for the Board of Ed as well, we were very fortunate, we bought our fuel at the bottom, and so we were able to save 7.7% on unleaded and 12.3% on diesel for the whole town. That's not just the town stuff, that's Board of Ed, water sewer, and that, so that was a good thing that happened, is to be able to have a line on that actually goes down. And that's with adding the 16,000 for the fire department, absorbing the fire department fuel. Straight, streetlights, you'll see it in our next budget with the building maintenance, the cost of electricity. This is the year, we used to have a phenomenal electric supply rate of, because everyone has their electric supply rates at their own houses, and ours, the town's was a four-year contract for 6.7 cents. That contract switched up on January 1st of this year to 10.1, which is more of the going rate, so that's one of the reasons why streetlights are going up, and you're going to see it in the building maintenance, and also that public demand charge that everyone's getting charged. And I would like to just quickly comment, and any questions you might have, but when it comes to the revenues, we are projecting about $106,400 in additional revenues. The biggest portion of that is commercial tips, so just so you understand what's going on, when the town trucks, I mean, the town crews go out and all the, they pick up the Kansas side of the street, that's all the residents, but if a business wants to buy a can and roll it out, then they don't pay for that. If they have a dumpster, or some of these new developments like Gateway, Rockin' Neck Village, they have to have their own dumpsters and stuff like that. When they, when their trash is picked up, it's driven up to Lisbon to the incinerator, the truck says it's from Eastline, they send Eastline the bill, and we charge the contractor, and we set the rates, I bring the rates in front of you guys, and we have a markup, so if it costs $70, we charge 75 in administrative fee. So, that's where, as the trash in this town seems to be trending upwards from some of these developments, Costco, as it's a gateway, Rockin' Neck Village, some of these other things, it's actually helping us provide some additional revenue. And on the landfill transfer station deposits, when we keep up with our rates and we look at things like the leaf charges and stuff like that, it does help revenue. I remember the whole debate, I did look back, and if anyone asks a question, I do have the, that whole debate about the leaves ended up being about $3,000 in revenue, but I didn't personally, maybe the board members heard, we didn't hear any contractors really complaining about it. I have a whole breakdown, if you guys want to see it, of how that worked out, but I think it was a, it was a good way. It deterred some leaves, some of the big roll-offs, just it provided two things. It provided some revenue, not a ton, it provided kind of a little bit of deterrence, and it seemed that we kind of worked with the contractors, getting them in, getting them out, and the contractors intended to try to go to the smaller trucks to meet the free loads, if that's what they want to do, that's what we want to do. So, I thought it was a success. I know, I know there was a lot of consternation, and everyone wanted to try to work best with everyone, and I think that was a successful thing, and as I said, it was about $3,000 in revenue, but, not a lot, but it was something, and any bit happens, when you're, if you're trying to cut $3,000, well, we just gained $3,000.
How did the employees at the transfer station, they were...
They were fine.
They were good with it?
They were fine because we were very clear what was what.
Okay, that's what, yeah.
And I talked to you, and I talked to Jason too.
Yeah.
We were trying to be very clear, and we weren't trying to be unfair to anyone, and we were trying to, you know, if this is what you charge this person, then that's what, you have to be consistent. But the whole thing of not charging town contractors, I think, went very well because they were happy that they were getting a little bit of an advantage of, say, a contractor that was out of town, and I think that's what the goal was.
I just want to make sure that the employees were...
Employees didn't have an issue.
And they were good with it.
We have a, we have a pretty, a much better accounting system up there of what comes into the transfer station, and our biggest thing is the bulky waste. I mean, that's, that's the biggest, that's probably 80% of our revenue, and then it's maybe 10%, 15% is the brush, and then it's all the other little things, you know, tires and leaves and stuff like that. So, that's all that I have on 317, unless you have any questions.
And that incorporates 105, correct?
Yeah, yeah, 317, yeah, 105, and it goes away, I guess. It's going to be 317, but it's going to be an overarching engineering, public works.
Joe, I appreciate, you know, all you do to control this budget. You're doing a lot, and you've really done a great job controlling the cost.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Roseanne, do you have any questions?
No, I'd just like to say, thanks for the work on the road. Quick cleanup after the storm. I heard the sand trucks out there pretty early in the morning.
Yeah. They, we have a great crew. We were down a few guys, so we pulled people from Parks and Rec and from water and sewer. I was going to put Kevin and Dan in a plow. We seemed, we seemed to get through it, so...
I got to check on my CD off.
Yeah, but yes, I think we have a great crew, and I think they did a great job in town.
So, I have a question, just before the snows came, we heard, like, the clouds going down, what do they, do they...
They're pre-treating, they're pre-treating the roads.
With what?
So, with salt.
Just salt?
We don't sand, we don't sand. We haven't sanded in, since I've been here eleven years. The whole, the whole concept in most towns, the smarter towns are doing this, there's a few towns left there putting sand down, is you put the material out an hour or two before the storm comes, and then as people drive over, it just puts a sheen of, you know, the salt chloride on the road, so that as soon as, it provides a barrier, so when the snow comes down, it kind of has a barrier, so you can get back to the black road quicker. So, that salt goes down there, it drops the temperature at which the road freezes. We don't have, you don't have snowpack or anything like that because that salt's down first. If you put the snow down after the snow happens, we just plow off the snow, plow off the salt. So, you have to get the salt down and get it, and when the salt, it's in a granular form, like, when people, when cars drive over and the heat, from the heat and just pressing on it, it breaks down the salt into a liquid, and the liquid goes over, and you don't have to put a lot on there. You know, in the yesteryears, we used to put down 2, 3,000 tons, we tried to put down 600 or 800. You just have to put down a certain amount, put it down a stream down the middle of the road, that's what, that's what the state does, and you put down a little bit, and it just, it works like, they call it magic salt, it's like magic.
Yeah, no, I was like, there's no snow, what are they doing? And that's what I was trying to figure out.
But that's where you look out the road, and my wife says that, oh, there's no snow on the road, is because we've already salted it, so when the, when the snow, which is wet, moisture, comes in, it just, it hits, it hits the product and it just melts it. So, you could have it on the road, you could have it on the grass, but in that way, it's a lot easier cleanup, the time, the cleanup time is less. It's just that you hear people rumbling and driving around, wondering, what are they doing? It's because you need to pre-treat the roads, so everyone pre-treats the roads. You have to do it just in time, that's why you need to know when the storm's coming. If it's coming in, like, this passing at 9:00 or 10:00, we're putting out salt at 7:00. It takes about two hours to apply to town. So, we put all our guys, they apply to town, and then they let it sit, and then, once it works, then it starts turning into a mush, and it makes it a lot easier to plow off. So, there's a lot to this, we educate our guys on it. If anything, and I'm also with the water department and Ben North, and we're trying to have, there's certain areas where we have wells that we're trying to put minimal salt because that will then make more sodium in the wells, which is a bad thing, so there's just a lot to this. And, you know, one of our biggest well fields is, by the way, right where the middle school in Lily B is, where there's a lot of parking lots in the schools, so we work with them of making sure that whole area, they minimize salt, because otherwise, it really impacts the water quality of the town.
I would like to add that the Commission of Natural Resources has asked for representatives to come in from highway and your department.
Sure.
And they have come and presented, listened to concerns about the salt, which is a statewide problem.
Correct.
Not just ours, and so I think we've, I think we've done a good job of educating ourselves on what we need to do for safety and also to protect our wells.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's, it's very important, and we do, the fact that town of East Line water and sewer is, and highway are all kind of intermingled, we can educate each other and, and with the Board of Ed to make sure that we're not putting out too much salt.
Yeah. That's a big factor. Appreciate your...
Thank you for the explanation.
... being conservative in that way. I have, anyone else with questions?
Two, two questions.
Sure.
Thanks, Joe. Municipalities get charged a public demand fee?
They do.
That's a shame.
Yes, it is.
That's a shame.
We'll put that on, no, yes, it is. It, we don't know when that is going to, just like everyone else's public demand fee in their bills. But unfortunately, if, if you're, if a homeowner gets it, just can you imagine what the community center's bill is?
That's what, as I was trying to do.
You know, so, it's, it's a $9,000 bill, is now 11,000 because of a public demand, and then they, they charge sales tax to it too, which I'm not sure why. So, that's kind of brutal.
And Alex, is that in your budget for the, the new charging stations?
What's that?
Is that, is that in your new budget for the charging stations?
Uh, it is built in, 80 additional fees, yeah. As, with their current rate rider, anyway. I mean, if they change their rate rider, then a lot of the, the board adjusts the fees. But as of right now, it's a little bit of data.
And the other good news, the other good news about the leaves, I got three very nice texts, that the fact that we listened. So, even though that debate took a little time and some working out, the contractors were very appreciative, as you said, of that we listened to them, and we acted on it. So, that's good.
So, real quick, I just want to say to everybody, that public benefit charge that we're all experiencing on our ever-source bill is only supposed to last 10 months. So, it's supposed to last July 1, 24 to April 30, 2025. We're budgeting as if it is not going to lapse in the event it doesn't, you know, they continue it. So, if, if they do let it lapse, we could save about 100K. All right? So, just so everyone knows. But we don't know that yet. So, we'll have to see as this gets closer. So, just want everyone to know that.
I just got my ever-source bill yesterday, and I was shocked. At least they had the courtesy of highlighting it in the different colors, so you knew what it was for, perhaps. It's pretty significant.
Joe, what is that, 30% increase in our bills? 32%?
Well, 35 to 40%.
It's heavy.
Yeah, it's staggering. It's not all the public demand, and part of it is caked in that, starting January 1st, our bills are going up. So, just, it's just...
There's two factors.
Yeah. What I, what I handed you is just, as I mentioned, you know, it's not a ton of money, but it's just the data of what I showed you about what the leaves, there's three, on the front page of it, there's three lines. One is, we took in 70, 147, 147,780 pounds, which correlates to 74 tons of leaves that we didn't charge anyone. And then, the leaf two was for the contractor leaves, in-town contractors, 35.7 tons, the 71,000. And then the 50,600, which was 25.3 tons. So, it was a total 103, 35 tons. I want to say we took in 100, probably about 180 tons last year. So, it's definitely down, which is good, because that's a lot of leaves to have, to manage for the next five years. And we just give it away at some point. We don't even really have a thing. So, and then the back thing is actually decent data, just for your own accord, of what kind of revenues are coming. And this is just over a six-month period, which just kind of gives you the, the two columns in the bottom, middle two columns is, the leaf two and leaf three, which is just, but this is on a monthly, so this is July to December. But it just gives you some data. The biggest one, construction debris, which is up in the top left corner, we take in a lot of revenue. That's bulky waste.
And Joe, why you don't charge the cardboard? It's because of, people might throw it away, or just do something else with it, or just...
Yeah. Well, it's recyclable, and we, cardboard is, we, we don't cause, it doesn't cost us to dispose of it, because SCARA covers all the cost of recycling for town of East Line. So, that's, we want people to recycle it. So, that's why we don't charge.
I figured that. Okay.
There's a lot of free things at a transfer station, and for the people that want on the tour, it's, it's got a lot of good things going on there, and a lot of services. But it's for the town residents, it's really not for other towns. It's for East Line, that's why it's there.
I like the new stickers, too.
Yeah. It's, they're, they're really working on efficiency, and we've gotten a lot of good comments on people getting in and out, and trying to get contractors in and out there quicker. And I think they appreciate that. Time is money.
Well, it's really a lot of improvements up there. That's pretty good.
Is there any other questions on Department 317?
Not for me. Don?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Now, who's, maintenance of town buildings, are you doing that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. That's one 13, number 13.
Yeah, 113 hasn't gone away. There's not a lot in this budget. The, just kind of like the last one, I just have a few comments on over, on the big picture, thousand-foot picture, and then a few details. This budget is up 118,300, or 13.9%. But 94,000 of that is electricity line. The rest of the budget is up 2.86, 24,000. And even still, the items there, there's a little bit on fuel and water. Some of the service contracts cost more. So, again, and I, I know you guys appreciate this, there's really not a lot here. It means we're maintaining the buildings at a minimum cost. And that electricity line, if that's the case, that they won't, I, I checked with our, our service rep, and they said that that's not correct, that they're going to keep, continue to keep charging that. But that's really probably a state rate thing. So, that's out of our control. But hopefully, the state legislature comes to the rescue, because that's, I mean, right now, we're tracking our, that, that line, the electricity line, right, this year is tracking to come in at, like, 360. And that's a lot more than I have budgeted.
Is it more, usage or rate?
Rate. All on rate. It's, it's really not usage. Our, our usage, if anything, our usage is kind of holding steady. And last year, at the, at the old police station, we still had heat on at like 50 or 60 degrees. This year, we drained the pipes and let it get cold, because we paid, we paid $7,500 for electricity on that building last year, and no one used it. So, now it's charging nothing, because the electricity's not on, because it's cold in there. But we drained the pipes, so it's not damaging the building.
Yeah.
So, we're doing everything we can there to save electricity. Trying to keep the lights on, though.
Well, this electricity issue is bigger than anyone in this room, and I don't know, I don't know how that gets resolved. Joe, I appreciate, again, everything you do.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, the numbers here, it's all about the electricity.
So, Dan, in some of the regional meetings that you have with some of the other towns for selectment, is there, do you think the, there's anything that as a consortium you could do? I mean, this is affecting, I can't think that there's too many people in this state that don't have electricity. It's a statewide problem, and I was shocked when I got my bill. It's, it's a lot of extra money.
Yep. Yeah, I, you know, we talk about it, and it has to do with, was it PURA or the, the...
PURA.
Yeah, PURA. And, and, you know, and they complain that, that we're not doing enough. And, you know, they're not going to invest in the infrastructure in Connecticut, because we're challenging their rates. So, I don't get it. I run a big extension cord from Massachusetts, it's a lot, a lot cheaper up there.
Norwich has a public utilities, Rotten has public utilities. I don't know if they're facing the same vegetarian issues we are because of the electricity.
Who would have thought that that would be an issue that you'd really have to, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know about their electricity, but I know their gas, water, and sewer side. I mean, they're, they're, they're proposing very large trade hikes. Just unfortunately, all the infrastructure costs of all these utilities is staggering, the costs of what these things cost.
I, I don't have any other questions. Anyone else? No? Good. Joe, thank you very much. Thanks for what you do, keep the town running. Unless there's any other questions, comments? Can I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting at 5:40 PM, February 10th, 2025.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, good. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
We adjourn.